August minute.
We walked down there, there wasn't anyone here. It was snowing.
Oh yeah, I heard it.
All right, folks, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you everyone for coming out. First order of business is the approval of our minutes from the March 12th meeting. Any comments, corrections?
I have none.
Got a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from March 12th meeting.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Posed. I will abstain, I was not at the meeting. All right, our first applicant is Guy Hevner, lot line adjustment. So if you want, go to the podium here with the microphone, please.
Yep, she's working on it now.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Rick Mast. I'm the engineer that prepared the plan. Basically, it is simply a lot line adjustment. There's no construction whatsoever proposed with a lot line adjustment. And it's between former quarry property, which is now owned by an entity, Guy Hevner, Inc., and the North American Drager property, which abuts our tract. As you can see, the existing property line is a jog, sort of a Z. And the lot line adjustment would simply just straighten out that property line. The same entity also owns the tract next door. My involvement in the last eighteen years for the previous owners, I've worked on various development plans that were never actually processed through the township. But there is a possibility in the future that that tract would be developed. It has nothing to do with what we're proposing tonight. But that tract, additional tract, would provide a potential secondary access or utility access, which it doesn't have now. That was always a concern with the other tract. But primarily, there's an opportunity to do it now. So they wanted to take the opportunity to acquire that tract while it was available. The two reviews we have are from the township engineer and the Bucks County Planning Commission. Really, there was nothing in the Bucks County Planning Commission other than correcting the label of the zoning district in our zoning table, which obviously we would do. And in the township engineer's review, I would characterize it as a will comply letter with the comments in the letter, other than what we're asking waivers for or deferrals at the present time. And I can quickly run through them if you would like me to.
Yeah, please do.
We prepared a letter dated April 5th. Since we're not proposing any construction, we wanted to defer improvements and dedication of right of way until there's development actually proposed. And there's no timetable, as I sit here today, for that. So that is the first two waiver requirements. Section 365, 1631, 39, and 40, which deals with roadway improvements. Section 365, 18C10, 365, 32B, which deals with dedication of ultimate rights of way. And in both of those cases, you know, we understand that that would be just a deferral until there's an actual development plan for the property submitted. The next section, Section 365, 18B1, is a planned scale waiver. Because it's a fairly simple plan, it fits at a scale of one inch equals 200 on one sheet, rather than one inch equals 50, which would take four sheets of property to show that one parcel that's being adjusted. So we're requesting a waiver of that plan requirement. And then the final waiver is showing natural resources. Again, it's simply because there's no impact to natural resources with the subdivision, not actually proposing any additional impervious cover, grading, or construction. So again, we would call that a deferral. We're not looking for any relief from natural resource standards, just deferral to show them when there's actual development proposed. So that's it. The parcel that is being conveyed, I should have mentioned upfront, is 4.26 acres. The two tracks are obviously fairly large tracks, so 4.26 looks fairly small, but it's, that's the size of the tract to be conveyed.
That's the shaded area here?
Correct. And there's a Z, which indicates it would be added to the former quarry property. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
How does this get you out to Quarry Road?
The grade of that parcel, it's not part of the quarry berm. That was a part where they quarried literally to the property line. But that embankment that's there, that rock face, is right on that property line. So this would be a strip of ground that's actually able to be used for utilities and for access, either emergency access or some other type of access.
And there's no plan for any type of development at this point?
No.
Why do they, why did they purchase the property?
The quarry property, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, they did purchase the quarry and the adjacent property. So there, it's likely that it will be developed at some point, just not at this time, so.
And there's no more quarrying to be done, is there?
There is not. They're actually quite far along in a reclamation process, which is basically just a process of closing it with PADEP. So there's no more quarry allowed at this point, that location.
You agree with that, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay, but there's no more quarrying gonna happen there? Okay, okay, thank you.
The zone that's being conveyed, it's worth pointing out, isn't actually part of the extraction zone either. So it's not zoned for it either.
Right. Well, you own it though. You own the extraction, the property in the extraction zone.
Right, correct.
Is that the PI zone?
Yes, that's the PI.
Not the RA zone, it's PI zone.
Correct. The RA is the...
Yeah, the tract.
So RA, correct.
I don't know how it ever ended up, but even the quarry property itself is not fully zone extraction.
It's not.
It's been out by the road.
Yeah, the extraction zone really runs through the property. And there aren't several parcel lines. This was a collection of parcels in the past, and it actually goes through those parcel lines. So it doesn't really follow any parcel lines. It does follow the quarry hole that was there. So I think that was probably the basis for the zoning line.
All right. So the purpose of this is to get access to Quarry Road. Secondary access, I guess. Well, it'd be secondary access to the property coming from quarry. Steve, is there anything in your letter that we need to address or, you know, except will complies here?
Not really. I mean, the bigger questions are the waiver.
Right.
I guess the one question that I was wondering, were the notifications sent out?
They were not.
Generally, you want to act out a plan and still...
Proper notification.
So our intent was to provide that prior to the board meeting. I was, was not an intentional, I wasn't looking for relief. I just wasn't aware of the requirement until we got the township engineer's letter.
So we could, I mean, if we get to making a recommendation, we can make a conditional on that?
Which we would accept that condition if we're able to do that.
All right, so waiver request. I mean, the only one that would have a question on would be the plan scale. That's a major deal. No, I mean, everything else makes sense.
Scale those, so you just keep all in one sheet?
Right. Go ahead, John.
Let's see, well, number six, the conveyance, the ultimate right of way. Leaving that open-ended, does that put the township at any disadvantage?
I don't think so in this case. We wouldn't normally do that, but it's usually residential property and there's not gonna be any further development. This, we know, is our properties that have potential for future development. That may impact what way we would fill it right away or... I don't think if this was at any different.
And we do understand likely it would be a requirement with any development that would happen after this, too.
Right. Any input on the waiver request, planning commission members?
I don't have any.
We're all doing.
I think, nope.
All right, is there anything holding us back or making a recommendation tonight?
I'd probably be conditioned on not going to the board.
Right. All right, well, let's get a vote on the waivers. I want to make a, make a motion to accept the waivers as presented. We do need to take public comment, I'm sorry. So at this point in a presentation, I'll ask public if they have any comment on the project. You're gonna need to wait till I recognize it, come up to the microphone. So any public comment on this project? Oh, you go ahead. Name and address, if you don't mind.
Kelly Fox, 211 Holiday House Road. I was just wondering, oh, that quarry, that's not gonna become a dump zone?
I imagine that would be allowed to happen.
Not part of the reclamation or anything like that.
Yes.
Monica Riley, 917 Cattle Road, Sellersville. You're putting all this together now for a reason. How far up the road are you talking about building on this? You obviously have a plan, because this has gone to the county and the township.
Well, the only thing that's going to the county and the township is the four acres. But, you know, obviously, there's a developable piece of property next to it, this...
It's like fifty acres.
It is, it is. So, so we're not, you know, we acknowledge that, so we, there's no secrets regarding that. If that's ever developed in the future, we've got a much longer process to come before the township. It would be public meetings. It's a very long process.
Probably houses, right?
Well, it's zoned residentially, that is, yeah. So likely, that's how it would be developed if it gets developed.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move forward. Get a motion on the waiver request?
Conditional. Right. Right on.
Move the point forward.
Oh.
We need to condition the waiver request.
Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the waiver request.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So at this point, I guess you're looking for preliminary file?
Yes, please.
Well, since you said please, conditional, yeah, I'm sorry. All right. You guys in agreement to do a conditional preliminary file on this? If so, someone make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to recommend conditional preliminary final approval of the plan.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time. Take care.
Send out your notices. All right. Next on the agenda is North Penn Water Authority. Damon.
Hi, my name is Julie Black. I'm the engineering supervisor for North Penn Water Authority. We are proposing a twenty, twelve thousand five hundred foot, twelve-inch ductile iron pipeline to be installed along Ridge Road from County Line Road to Almont Road. The purpose of the transmission main is to provide reliable, safe drinking water to our existing customers in West Rock Hill Township and Sellersville Barrow. So specifically existing customers, this isn't part of growth. As part of this project, we're seeking Penn Vest funding. And as part of that application, we require a formal written review from West Rock Hill Township to make sure we're being consistent with local land use plans and agricultural land use plans. We've already received all permits for construction for this project. We estimate that it will take approximately six months to complete, scheduled to begin in early 2024, assuming we receive the Penn Vest funding. And one of the things to note that I think would be one of the larger impacts for West Rock Hill Township would be the PennDOT detour plan, the traffic control detour plan, which has been approved by PennDOT, but would involve a detour and retreat.
Do we know where that detour is?
Yeah, the detour plan was provided.
Oh, it was?
That's what that was.
Does this have anything to do with the plan we saw a few years ago, where they're gonna put a water tower on this property?
So they're, yeah, they're definitely separate projects, but we're still pursuing land for a water tank to support the Sellersville Barrow and West Rock Hill Township. But, but no, that's not related to this transmission main. The transmission main will go in and be live without a tank.
And is it terminating at the hospital?
Right on Almont. So it'll tie in on Almont Avenue, where we've recently extended the main on the east side of 309. So we have a PennDOT permit to bore under 309, and we'll tie in there on Almont Avenue.
So how far is it servicing in the Sellersville?
The new transmission main itself?
What's, I mean, is it gonna provide, you're gonna, you're gonna connect to an existing line in...
Yes, we're connecting to an, yeah, to an existing line in Sellersville. So that line on Almont Avenue already connects to our existing lines in Sellersville.
Okay.
Yeah, so the light blue on the map there is all existing, and the dark blue is proposed.
There's no, there's gonna be no service connections to this transmission?
Nope, this transmission.
How many West Rock Hill customers do you have now?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get you that number.
Well, the whole of, we're in to the hospital.
Right. Yeah, we're not...
But the boroughs are...
Right. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Are you getting, because they go to Washington, too?
About their water service that requires this plan?
So this plan is currently, we serve Sellersville by wheeling through to neighboring municipalities, and this will allow us to serve solely from North Penn Water Authority to our existing customers.
In terms of that, at least, I could see between County Line Road and Almont Road, Ridge Road is fairly flat. But that's uphill from somewhere else lower. Do you have the capacity to get the water uphill to this?
Yep, so right down here, we have our existing Telford booster station that will be boosting the water up to meet the gravities.
And how long is Ridge Road gonna be torn apart?
We're anticipating six months from, you know, project award to final completion total. Active construction, don't have an exact answer.
And how long do you think the detours are gonna be in effect? For the length of the project?
Well, yes.
Is it a complete road closure?
I heard like one lane.
One lane.
That's right, right there, Chris, that's one.
Thank you.
I also have a flash drive.
So why wouldn't Telford do this? Since it's all the way along the top edge of their service area?
Well, it's not related to any new customer. So it's just North Penn Water Authority feeding our existing customers from our existing...
But Telford won't be able to tap off of it to feed their customers on the south side of Ridge Road?
It's not, it's not related to growth at all. So we haven't planned for it to be related to growth or interconnections, but that doesn't mean there couldn't be a future interconnection with Telford. Just not the purpose of doing it right now.
All right, so getting back to traffic, it's gonna be one lane on Ridge Road, and then this other, it's an alternate route that you have mapped out here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, for the people in the audience, it's a little bit hard to see, but the detour route goes down 309, bypass down the state road.
Yep.
And across state road into Telford, down County Line Road and back up County Line Road. So it's not using local roads for the sign. People may take local detours elsewhere, but the sign detour will be close to the end of it. If it's one lane, whose detour? West or East?
I can get back to you on that.
Is it true that...
I'm sorry, you have to identify yourself and come up with a talk, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure.
Can we wait till the end of the project, please? Yeah, I'm sorry. That's the protocol. We let them present, and then keep your questions in your head, and we'll let you ask your questions then.
So it looks like there is an existing interconnection now between North Penn and Telford? Right in front of, right at the intersection of County Line and Ridge?
I believe so.
It says existing. North Penn Water and Telford interconnection.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was the connection point back when they were told enough to order type of project.
Where are you looking to put the water tower eventually?
I think we're still pursuing land for that water tower, so I don't think we have a set location yet.
What would be your preference? I mean, top of the hill there?
Yeah, I mean, as, along this transmission main, because we'd get the best capacity from our system. So somewhere along this transmission main at a high point, ideally.
So the transmission line you're talking about installing would feed the tower?
Yes.
Tower and storage for that line?
Yeah, in the future, yep.
So what are you looking for tonight?
We, so we've already received all permitting. We're looking for a letter, like a formal written review, saying that we are being consistent with local land use plans and agricultural land use plans in the township. So I think NTEC Engineering provided a sample of what is typically supplied with a Penn Vest application from a township. So I'm not sure if you have that. Just stating that the project's been reviewed and is in compliance with local land use plans.
We have any issues with local land use?
Not if you're not serving any properties in the township.
Or outside of your service area.
Right, right. You have the service area, like the whole. Sellersville Borough Service Area.
Theoretically, they couldn't service either side of Ridge Road until they cross through.
Right.
Nothing specific relative to the request. Just to comment, the detour is, the traffic is detoured to go north on 309 there. You know, the turning lane right there has about, maybe it's about three, four cars deep. It's not very extensive. So depending, PennDOT reviewed it, they reviewed it, but depending on the volume, I could see traffic getting snarled up there at the, in between those two lights, making a left to go up there north. As you go underneath, as you go underneath it.
And it done before the Wawa.
Throw that into the mix, yeah. But this commences in about six months, right, or fall? Is that what it says?
Yep.
Are there currently pressure issues in the service area over by the hospital?
No, not, no, no pressure issues.
I struggle with the letter. I, you know, kind of based on the discussion and some of the answers. I understand the discussion of why you feel the project is necessary. But in terms of benefits to the township, I think at this point, I'm not seeing any. You said that there's no, no customer complaints, there's no pressure issues. It's for, as you said, to eliminate a wheeling issue now that you have. It's kind of outside of the jurisdiction of the township. So I, I can see the township in support of the project, but I struggle with a written recommendation that includes lines like, "Project is important, and we strongly encourage Penn Vest to provide appropriate funding." I'm not seeing the need that would cause such strong language in a letter with the township signature on it.
Understood. So this is a sample letter provided to us by our engineer. So if there's language in here that you'd like to remove, that's okay. The purpose is that we're in compliance with land use and agricultural plans, that the land use plans and agricultural plans for the township. So if that language makes you uncomfortable, we can remove that.
And I struggle with it, too. I mean, you're digging up the road and running a pipe. I mean, there's no land use or agricultural issues associated without, not serving any customers. You're just running a pipe in the road. I don't understand the, the, kind of the question, because I don't see that there is a question.
Yeah, it's just a requirement of the Penn Vest funding that we're required to meet, because the project will take place in the township.
Is there a chance that Penn Vest won't grant the loan?
Well, we...
Even if we, even if we agree to it? You went a long line of water projects?
I think our application would be considered incomplete without the letter.
My question is, if you get everything you need to send to Penn Vest, is there, like, a lot of people battling for this? A lot of authorities battling for a loan right now that you might not get it, a grant?
I'm not, I'm not sure. We, I think our thoughts are, our feeling is that we have a good shot because of the project, but we're not sure.
Okay, so there is a chance that you wouldn't get the...
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I think where Penn Vest coming from, they do these kind of things on all kinds of projects, is they don't, they don't want to fund a project that is contrary to the overall goals of development of the township.
Right.
So, sewer treatment plant in the rural area of the township that had no benefit for the township. I'm just making up ideas.
Right.
Where they're running a service line through an area that wasn't slated for public water.
Right. That's why I said with caveat that this is not gonna serve outside of the service area. It's not contrary to our comprehensive plans, strictly transmission line through the town.
Right, it's just the luck of the draw that the way that their service territory is drawn is they've got these two points that they'd like to connect, and they have to go through somebody else's... and have to go through somebody else's land to get there. I mean, I understand that.
I'm, I'm struggling with the major inconvenience this is going to cause residents on the township. And that's a big deal.
It just made me was in my. With that, when they repaved Ridge, that was.
It's going to be similar to.
Right.
Sewer line.
Yeah. And that was not a benefit to our residents.
And that was much deeper for the rock problem. It's more severe. I know you've already did an exploration for rock.
We did. Yep. Yeah.
It's a much shallower line, right? You're only running it four feet.
Yep, about four feet. And we've identified where we believe there's rocks. So build into the contract.
Hopefully it won't be as slow as that project, but it's a much longer time.
Right?
Well, okay. Is there any thought to phasing that or it'll just be the entire thing will be shut down once the detour goes into effect?
Um, we've discussed phasing it, but we don't, we don't have a plan yet. So I don't want to, you know, speak and say that we'd phase it and have it set up differently at this time.
Has there been any notifications sent out to this point to anyone with regard to like landowners, people affected by this?
No. So, um, we, we would send that out typically once the project was awarded. So it'll go out like 30 to 60 days before construction would begin.
So you don't get resident input before you get the approval?
Resident input on the.
On the project.
Well, that's.
Aside from tonight.
That's what we're doing now. Yeah.
But it's not written notification then.
Property owners that would be affected by it.
It's entirely independent right away?
In the right way. Yep. Entire project is in the, in the right way on previously disrupted.
Is there any benefit to the township aside from the handful of folks that are going to get better water pressure near the hospital? Are we going to get a road completely resurfaced?
Well, we're going to, per our Pendot permit, we'll walk Ridge Road with them. We've walked it before the project. We'll walk it with them after the project and they'll, they'll discuss with us what needs to be paved afterwards. Typical, you know, typical Danny Pendot project.
What's the, there's still something in here with regard to the, uh, Telford, uh, authority having, uh, sewer, uh, line put down on Almont Road, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
So is there any coordination with, uh, Telford with regard to somehow boring under 309 for sewer?
Yes. Yeah. So we've been working with, um, CKS engineers did our design and I guess that they're also Telford's engineers. So we've been working with them, um, to make sure that we're on the same page. Um, we're planning to bore, um, together at the same time. So it'll be a space for them and for us. And then we've, they've talked about also continuing down Almont Avenue. But I don't know the details on that. Um, but we're trying to coordinate that.
Almont Road on the other side.
On the east, the eastern side.
The hospital side.
Yes.
Yeah, because I think it's slightly uphill from like 309 at the one at that point along Almont.
Do you have any other construction details? Are they going to be working at night, working during the day or both or?
So I can, we don't have those details yet because the project hasn't been awarded. Um, but I can, I have a flashover. I can drop it in a box. Our entire construction drawings and bid specs, if you want to review those. That would detail those. I mean, I think we have in there typical working hours. Um, but if you wanted us to avoid rush hours, then we could probably try to coordinate that.
During school, say that school buses.
Has there been any conversation with Telford about, are they doing the sewer under 309 at the same time? They're just boring a hole that's there.
I don't want to speak for, for them. Um, I think they're planning to put the case, they're replying to put a casing. So it's available for both water and sewer, but that's the extent.
So this basically gets water and sewer across through. Right? Close. I mean, it's.
It may happen at the same time, but I don't think you can connect this project to the potential for Telford to bore under 309.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to speak for, yeah.
North Penn Water Authority would perceive this project whether or not Telford is doing anything.
Correct. Correct. Yeah.
You're only, they're only asking for comment.
Has there been any contact with Telford with regard to their plans at, during this?
I, I know we've had some informal discussions with them that they were interested in, in boring under the roads, but I haven't heard anything concrete. But either entity could do it independently. So.
Yeah, it's not predicated upon one or the other. Yeah, right. Sure. Right.
Well, it's not tied to.
This has to go before supervisors? Or they, we make a recommendation to the supervisor?
I'm not even sure. Now, Penn Vest is only looking for a letter for the planning commission of the township.
I think the, the planning office would be fine.
I'd rather the supervisor.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, whatever.
May 9th is your deadline or something?
Yeah, whatever the township's comfortable with.
May, May 8th, you need the.
For our application. Yep.
How long's this been in process?
This project?
Yeah.
Um, well, it's been in design since I started at North Penn, which was in December of 2022. So probably this before that.
All right. What's anybody's thoughts on this?
Well, I see this being a large inconvenience for the township without a whole lot of benefit.
Yeah.
As far as, is it anti to any of our land use or agricultural plans? I don't see that as a.
I agree with you wholeheartedly when both.
As a means to argue that.
Right. Yeah. I mean, you know, like we both have brought up that the benefit does not outweigh the inconvenience to the township.
Where does the letter language appear in this?
We.
Sample, page three of the staple.
You mentioned before that, um, you're currently wheeling water and that you prefer to, service those customers without having to go through that. So is there a cost associated with wheeling? More expensive than leading you, more expensive to wheel the water than to use your own facilities?
Um, sure. Yeah. But I mean, we're also selling water when we also, we're also making money through that process. So we're, we're, we're selling more than, than we're taking at the other end in some cases. So in some ways it could be a wash. Yeah, this, I mean, this project a lot, there's, I mean, I think everyone's seen the news. There's a lot of emergent contaminants, a lot of different things happening in our area. And this allows us to have control over the quality of water that, that we serve to our residents. So it's not mixing with any other municipality's water. This is water from Bar's Park Water Treatment Plant that we're confident in serving to our residents. That's the driver.
Let's talk about the cost. So there's, this project is going to cost you a certain amount of money.
Yep.
That over a period of time, you're going to look to recoup somehow from your rate payers?
Yeah. So, um, actually in the, the fact sheet, we, we covered that a little bit. So the estimated total cost of the project is $5 million. Um, the current average annual residential bill is $395 per year and rates are not expected to be increased due to this project. You know, we're going for Penn Vest funding, which would allow us to not impact our customers.
Right. So it's a different weather. So what's the financial impact of not doing the project?
The financial, it's impact of not doing the project? We're not, it's, the financials really aren't driving it. So I'm not sure how to answer that question. I'm not, I'm not sure. I guess we just, we wouldn't, we wouldn't get the grant or the loan and we wouldn't spend the money, I guess.
I think to answer your question, John, it would be fair to say, if you didn't do this project and you ended up with a water quality problem in your system, that it would be cost to correct or treat the water outside of the board.
I'm, I'm sure, sure. I'm not sure exactly how we would address that, right? If, you know, if our point of entry points were, were impacted. And we're, I'm not saying that our neighboring utilities have concerns, but this allows us to control it so that we know the quality of the water, where it's coming from. And then, you know, we're serving our customers with water from Bar's Park.
So this project would, would provide better water volume and better water quality. Potential.
Yeah, quality that we, yeah, that we control.
Can we just say to the supervisors that we don't have a problem with it based on the, you know, on the, uh, effects to the,
Growing planning.
Risky plan. Yeah. Standpoint of land use plan and the comprehensive plan. Just saying we don't have a problem. We don't have a problem with that and let them make the recommendation.
Um, yeah, that's, that's not a bad idea. All right. Uh, let's open us a public comment. Yes, sir. Draw straws.
You both get a turn.
You get two and a half minutes. So keep it brief.
Arthur Ketterer, 31 Augustine Road. Um, did you say there was certified letter sent out to the residents or no?
We haven't sent it yet, but we will send it prior to construction.
I think it would be fair to send it prior to them than after the fact. So I asked you guys to take that consideration because I think that's only fair the way it should be. And you're with Penn going through, you said? Is there future of Telford coming off of you and getting these residents here and charging if they want? Possible?
It's, I, I, it's possible in the future, but the purpose of this is a transmission main. There's no growth if not for any new customers, only existing customers.
And you're going to go under 309, right? And you said future, uh, I mean, well, other companies are going to be working with you to go under Telford, like sewer and water maybe?
Potentially. Yeah.
Okay. So probably a yes. So, well, we want to make it as fast as possible for them to come down at the same time. I mean, it's feasible. Business wise for that to happen, but we don't want developments here. And by doing that, that's going to make it easier for them in the future to get that. So I like to take that consideration, how that's going to work. And, uh, I know they got a lot of money, but if they're going to do it, I want to take every dime they have and make them pay for it. So, you know, it's only fair. But the letter I think is the main point here. Some of these people aren't here tonight. Talk about it and they shouldn't be here. That's why this movie is probably full if they had, if they knew about it. So I think that should be done before you're making decisions, my opinion. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Devaney, 221 Mountain View Road. Uh, so in terms of the detour, I mean, every single emergency service comes from, you know, the hospital side out Ridge Road to get to any resident all the way out almost to Almont Road. So if you're shutting down that whole thing, I mean, there's the potential that you're going to delay emergency services for tons and tons of residents that, you know, maybe can't wait that extra time. So they could probably better if this was going to happen, that it was sectional shutdowns, not all at once. Cause I think, I think a lot of people would suffer from that. And a lot of people that aren't even aware of it. And, you know, wouldn't find out until they're waiting, waiting and waiting for something. So.
Yeah, I think definitely it sounds like the detour plan is a cause of concern and separate from this issue, we can definitely review that plan and see if there's a way that we can work with you to make that better for the township.
That's all.
Thank you. Valid points. Thank you. I'm calling one of you guys.
Oh, Kelly Fox, 211 Almont Road. Um, so my question is, isn't there already a right of way for the road and a totally distance width? So why can't you dig off the road and place everything off the road? So you don't, not shut the main highway down that everybody's really concerned about? Right now you're going to dig it up the road and put it right under the road, right?
Why can't we put it in the right of way off of the road?
Correct.
I'm not sure if there's enough space off of the road that they want.
Well, you have all these people that you're going to be digging up their property. You can't offer them money, then shutting down the whole road for all these millions and five millions of dollars? You're going to be shutting people out of convenience for how much time? You say six months. I don't believe that for a minute.
Okay.
Thanks. Anyone else? Brian?
Uh, Brian Landis, Augustine Road. Um, one question, is this happening regardless of what we say? This is, this is happening. So they just want a letter from us, correct? So this is happening, correct? I mean, provide the board of supervisors, but there's, this is moving forward as far as I understand. Cause what I heard her asking for tonight is just us to write this letter that said it doesn't disturb property. So that was my one question. So the other one to what Tim said, I was under the impression that Telford owned the rights all the way through Almont. So I'm a little confused as well. So say Telford at some point wants to come up and bring it down. Are they digging up the road again and just running a pipe next to theirs?
He is, I'll, I'll answer that question. So the key issue is, is.
How do we buy?
Mentioned several times, it's a transmission line. So even though they are running what is technically on the map part of Telford service area, Telford is responsible for the distribution piece. This is the transmission piece. They're somewhat separate. So they're not serving any customers on this side of.
Right.
309 or outside of their area. Yes, it does make it easier for Telford later on, should Telford choose to move forward with providing water and sewer in the area that's already been assigned to them as their service area.
Okay. And the only last thing, just I was in marketing, but I heard a lot of ambiguous probabilities or, um, and it's better quality, but to me, before we disturb this road for six months, I'd like to see definitively what the quality improvements would be. I mean, lower PFOS, I mean, lower arsenic, what exactly? Before we decide, I mean, it sounds very hypothetical and very fluffy to me that there's really no benefit for our township other than a new service line that might have better, better quality. But I'd like to see what that means defined, even though I'm not receiving the water. But for us to be disturbed in this township, I haven't cert, I didn't hear anything tonight. And I think the fact that you guys had such a tough time with this, I'm guessing you are thinking the same thing, that it's hard to weigh the, the value the township's getting for what the, 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 all the inconveniences we're going to experience. And again, better quality to me sounds like a TV commercial, you know, your laundry's cleaner, but by what standard? So that was just my opinion that I have a, it sounds like it's going through, but I just don't see the value for West Rock Hill Township, at least at this point in time. So if it didn't happen, my question would be to you is what, what happened? I mean, is they'd still be serviced. They might not have as good a water pressure and the quality is current, but it really is a, a non, non event, right? I mean, it's not like they wouldn't have water. And you could do this again some other time, maybe just without the grant, right? Okay. So there's nothing that says you have to do this because you have customers without water?
Well, yeah, I mean, all my customers currently have water. Yeah.
Cause maybe it's a cynic in me. I just think there's something planned that.
It's not an emergency.
Yeah. So then if there's not an emergency and we have no value for our township, then maybe table it. And if we have that opportunity and when we do need it and it ties into all the developments we're talking about possibly, then bring it up again. I just, I'm having a tough time just understanding. I'm not against it. I just didn't hear anything tonight that. then bring it up again. I just, I'm having a tough time just understanding. I'm not against it, I just didn't hear anything tonight that says we should do this. But, sorry, I probably won't over my two and a half minutes, guys.
Anyone else?
Christine Shelley Willen Road. Um, I too, I just kind of feel like if this project has been in the works for two years and nobody was notified, I kind of um, I feel like there's a lot of bait and switch projects that happen, and they say it's probably not going to, but with all of the hypotheticals, I, I just don't see why a delay on their, you know, on their part in letting the township know and the residents know, means that we now have to quickly make a decision. I just makes me feel cautious, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, Kevin Bergy, 2, 215 Augustine Road. Um, my concern is the truck traffic with Niceville Quarry down the road. I've worked for H and K Group, and this is going to really impact them. Their main entranceway is on the Ridge Road. If they shut down part of that entranceway, now they have to redesign part of their quarry to bring it out the county line, which is not set up for the truck traffic. Now they have to bring their engineers in to redesign their quarry to find a different way for the trucks to get around. Can you at least think about that also? I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think from what we've seen on the detour plan, they'd probably leave the side with the quarry open on the road because they're bringing everything up northbound, so it'd be coming west across the ridge.
You know which side of the road they're planning on doing this work?
Yes, um.
On the side, our side of the road. That's, that's what I assume. So H and K's entrance would probably not be affected, but.
Hey, just a quick question on the detour. Are we notifying people on the detour route? Because that's a lot of, just.
I would imagine.
Okay.
Those are first nights in. We haven't been hashing this out for a few months, we've just seen it tonight. But I mean, that's, that's a valid question. Um, I mean, obviously, you're seeing a lot of pushback here tonight.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think if it's been in the works for two and a half or three years and nobody's been notified about it, and this is the first we're hearing of it, we got to make a
we got to make.
Recommendation letter by May eighth. I mean, that's not really fair to us or our residents, you know. I agree with you, Tim.
I mean, I'm not inclined to, to say, I'd do this for sure.
If all the permits are issued and all that, and, you know, it's obviously been in the works for a long time, but, you know, we're the last to know about it, it's mainly affecting us.
Yeah.
Can I suggest, since there is a time concern, that you at least have Chris make a report at the board supervisor meeting of what your concerns are?
Sure.
And then the board can make their decision on whether they want more information or, or want issue any panel about it.
Yeah, I uh, just need a formal way of saying pass the buck to the supervisor.
You are big.
I want them to hear it. Yeah, I mean, are you guys comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think so.
With you making a report with the concerns of the residents and our concerns?
Yes.
Allowing them to make the final.
Not making a recommendation.
Yes, and, and, and the way it was presented, I mean, the timepiece is, is, one resident had stated, you know, it's, it's a month, you know, for something that's been in the works.
Been in the works for two years.
Yeah.
Drop in our lap and
Yeah.
wanting, uh, wanting an answer in a month, less than a month. We're kind of grossly affected by this project.
Yeah, I understand.
So let me uh, let me report this to the supervisors and see what they have to say about it. Uh, I can't make a recommendation to.
So the board of supervisors meets next Wednesday night. Are you available to attend that meeting to answer questions?
Yes, and I believe my boss is planning to attend that meeting, Dan Preston. He was unable to attend tonight.
Okay.
Alright, so we're pulling this up, abling? I don't exactly sure how we formalize what we're going to do.
We'll call it.
Well, if anything, you're making a recommendation for the chairman to indicate concerns to them.
Alright, there you go.
Just leave it at that.
Make that motion.
Um, just to make sure I bring back my, the concerns are related to the, the detour plans, the, the impact to the roads specifically, and then is there another major concern? I want to be prepared.
I mean, that is the biggest concern.
Resident notification.
We're, we're willing, we're willing to, you know, work to make that, you know, as best for the township as possible. So if there's comments on the detour plan specifically, separate of this, the letter that says we're in compliance with land use plans and agricultural land use plans, I'd I'd like, um, I'd hope we could think of those as separate, just we could work on, you know, through the detour plan, if there's a better solution. We could work through phasing, we could, you know, if there's comments on that specifically as a separate thing.
Right. Well, let me uh, let me discuss this at the meeting uh, on Wednesday, and we'll see what shakes out from there.
But I think another major concern is the fact that we're just hearing about this now, and advanced residents haven't been notified.
Sure, yeah, understood.
Yeah, the resident notification is a concern.
And that's, well, actually township notification.
That would be nice, too.
I, I, I apologize, we didn't bring it to this, this specific meeting ahead of time. We do have a, a occupancy permit for the project from West Rock Hill Township?
What?
From December.
Hi.
Twenty twenty-three. So I just, we.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, sorry. So it's, um, but I do, I mean, I, I hear your concerns and I thank you for your time tonight.
Alright, so we'll, I'll, I'll report what we just discussed uh, to the supervisors on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright. Moving on. Uh, old business. We have any old business to discuss? Yeah, well, yeah, let's talk about that. Um, so the action plan on the uh, plan status reports, Steve?
Yes, we have two. Uh, some plans on the plan status report that's separate from our act and I report to supervisors. One, um, you made a recommendation on last month, or you being, the commission made a recommendation to deny the, of course, power road annexation plan. I believe that'll be on the board's agenda. Uh, project that you have not made a recommendation on is the 109 Augustine Road project. We do not have a grant of an extension for that project, so I recommend that you make a recommendation on that project.
Have they been asked for an extension?
No. Not a good.
So they would have a week to grant the extension, or, I mean, if we, we recommended denied his plan based on that, they, they would have until a board meeting to uh, grant the extension?
Yep.
And that would change our recommendation? Okay. Alright, so someone want to make a motion to deny this plan, recommend denial of the plan based on lack of extension?
This is number fifteen.
Correct.
109 Augustine.
Augustine, yeah.
I'll make your recommendations.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay. Any other old business? I don't know. Any new business? I have nothing in new business. We have any coming down a pipeline statement?
Um, yes, the warehouse at 3115 Old State Road was resubmitted yesterday.
That's um, triple net?
No.
Oh, wow, uh, Bereston.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the project that they're funding is deployed.
Right, right, right.
So that'll be on the next one.
Okay.
Assuming the name is all right.
Right.
Anticipated on that.
Were they still trying to get the, the grant? They were supposed to come to supervisor meeting.
Yeah, I don't know what happened with the funding. Uh, they, they didn't need to, they ultimately did not need to come to supervisors because they got enough support letters from other agents.
Okay.
I don't know what happened to that. They did go back to the zoning hearing board for additional variances, stayed uh, for granted.
Right.
I think they increased the height a little bit, and some other miners think it went land.
I, I attended that meeting on, in new business, and I was approached by two of the um, members of the zoning hearing board, uh, pleading to um, look into raising the uh, roof height and commercial industrial in the, uh, in the zones. Apparently, this is one of the items that they run into quite a bit. Uh, thirty-five feet seems to be a little low for the, for the standards of today's commercial institutional buildings. So I told them I would discuss that with, with the panel here, or at least tell you guys.
What's your sense on that, Steve?
Well, I don't know what the right answer is, but it is correct to say that the modern warehousing, whether it's certainly warehouse, but it's some business that has a warehouse associated with it, the stacking systems that they use generally require forty-five to fifty quid. Probably, we're seeing that everywhere. That's sort of the industry standard for racking automated systems.
I just wanted to plant that seed. Like I said, they, they approached me after a meeting. Um, any other new business?
I have none.
None. So I'll open the floor to public comment. Any public comment from the audience? Yes, sir. Please.
Just trying to get some information. Uh, David Taylor, 235 Mountain View Road. Um, the select properties developments that they're working on, um, 537, I think, or they had posted a notice um, on both Mountain View and um, and on Lawn um, about something about thirty days because of failure to act. And I emailed Greg. He hasn't, he said he was going to take it up with the solicitor, haven't heard anything, so we were just seeing, do you guys have any information?
I do. I would, I was uh, given information today. Um, Greg is on vacation, so is a solicitor. So that doesn't help, doesn't help our cause right now. Um, so due to the fact that the, and, and I'm paraphrasing, so I'm not a lawyer, the fact that uh, that plan was denied last month by the, by the supervisors. Um, it was denied due to number one, like we just discussed, they didn't grant an extension. We have, we have so much time to act on a, on a project that if we're running out of time, we have to for an extension. They didn't grant that extension. Um, so the supervisors decided to deny the, the, the plan based on some uh, non-conforming zoning issues, SADO issues, and stormwater management issues. So a- apparently Select Properties has taken a, a legal approach.
Trying to push the issue, kind of.
I, I don't know if I call it that, but uh, they're, 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 they're taking, taking up legal. Um, and citing some, some things that the township had done that, that would make the uh, denial obsolete. And, and again, I'm paraphrasing. Um, I was told that if anyone wants to appeal this, to give your information to the township staff, and they will contact anyone who wants to file a, uh, formal appeal.
Who files the appeal? The township or the residents have to?
I think you'll, you'll get guidance on how to appeal.
Okay.
From, from township staff.
Okay.
I, I think, I.
Yeah, I know. I appreciate.
I got this right before I got there. Right after, right after the.
Just everybody driving down the road, stop, everybody taking a picture, you know, and then.
Tried to do that on a way.
Blowing it up.
Appealing what they're doing, I don't know, this.
Yeah, I mean, it says you have thirty days to appeal, and that was my question, it's like, who, who, who appeals? Like, you know, and then it, the plan in the, in your list of, of things, it says action required by four seven or something. Action by who? Is that action by the, the, the person who's asking for the project or the town, you know, whose action that's.
I'm assuming it's the township.
Uh, the township, the act.
Yeah, that is, right. That's our, our deadline under MPC.
Yeah, the dates of the list are, are township active.
Okay.
Township took action on the plan, the developer has an ability to appeal that action. The developer is filing their own action that was noticed on the plan. Affected property owners in the township probably have the right to appeal their act.
Okay, that's, okay.
But it's a legal matter, though.
Yeah, no, that's fair. But it sounds like, you know, at least, at least a logical thing would be for a resident to appeal to the contact Greg at the township and say, hey, we'd like you to appeal this, or, and what, what's the mechanism for that?
Exactly.
And hopefully Mary's off of vacation by then.
Hopefully, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very valid, thank you. Anyone else? Alright, seeing none, uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll circle.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Alright, thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.